Okay, good evening. This is Eastlime Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting of November 6th, 2024. We could rise and appreciate the Fudge of Allegiance.
The Fudge of Allegiance, the flag. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation and the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first, do we have any additional agenda and consent calendar items? I'm not aware of any, anything else. Okay. Do we have any public delegations this evening that wish to address the board? Please, if you would, come to the podium and just identify yourself, your name and your address, and the nature of your, whatever it is.
Yes, Paul Renshaw, 18 Atwood Drive. Some of you know me, maybe a couple don't. I'm a lifelong resident here in town, been employed by the police department for 40 years, and I am currently the Police Union President. There's a couple of issues that I want to speak to regarding our employees and some retirement folks. The town is aware of these issues. I'm not sure if all of you are or not, maybe you are, maybe you're not. The underlying issue for me, and the reason to be here to speak to these couple of matters, is that myself and others have attempted to communicate with the town, including Mr. Gervais, who I actually get along with very well, have a good relationship with. But the problem is that we attempt to communicate and it goes into a black hole. And I'd like to think that after four years here, that be given a little more consideration. And I also think that the employees that have served the town that have since retired, and some of them are here that are going to speak, I believe, deserve the courtesy of some feedback, some information, a reply. So the two issues that I'm referring to, and I'd be happy to get together with any one of you at another time to get deeper into these, so I don't want to belabor the point tonight, but... So, the police union pension, we have money deducted that goes into the pension, and that is taxed. The issue is, your money going in is taxed, when the money comes out, it shouldn't be taxed, or at least that portion. We discovered that that was a problem, and the town acknowledged that's an issue. And really, it came to light the end of 2023, when the pay stubs changed and the deductions were right there in black and white, and you could see them. So we raised the issue then, which is, you know, almost a year ago. Now, the response essentially then and now is that we have an actuary, you know, working with it to try to deal with it. So it's being worked on, but the problem is, we don't get an update, we don't get any progress reports, we don't know where this is going, when it's going to end, we don't get a reply. The second matter is health insurance. I was called, as some of the other union leaders were called, to a meeting in March of 2024. Mr. Cunningham called the meeting, there were some others in attendance, but it was discovered that the health insurance was being deducted after tax, and it should have been pre-tax. Now, that was rectified, but they need, they, meaning the town, needs to figure out how to correct that going back to who knows how long. And apparently, there's a tax attorney working on this. But again, it's going back to March when this came up, so we're talking months and months ago. And we try to get answers, we try to get some update, we try to get, you know, when this is going to be rectified and how, and we're really not getting any response. So that's why we're here tonight, we wanted to bring this matter to the board's attention, and hopefully, some of you will look into it. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you so much, Paul.
Yes, question?
Hello, my name is Gemma Vindowski, and I live at 15 Dean Road. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a retired town employee after 31 years of working for the police department. I'm standing here tonight, knowing that I'm not going to get any answers, and that's okay. That seems to be the theme when it comes to the current and retired town employees being wrongly taxed over the last three decades or more. Now granted, no one here in this room created this problem. I'm about to, the problems that I'm about to bring up. But as far as I know, no one in this room has made much of an attempt to fix those So for more than 30 years, members of the fire and police unions have been contributing to the town's pension plan, and every time the town, the employee did, the contributions were taxed. And I'm guessing every one, every one of us thought this practice was correct, as I did. For about a year, then about a year ago, an astute spouse pointed out to her husband that this improper taxing was occurring, getting taxed, being taken away, and then being taxed, taken away. A short time later, a town employee, this same employee brought this double taxation to the attention of the finance director, and it was deemed not a big problem. Fortunately, in late December of 2023, another in-town employee, while filling out paperwork to again retire, again questioned why she was going to be taxed again on her retirement payments when she had already paid taxes on the pension contributions. It is my understanding, it was during that meeting, that the finance director agreed that there was indeed a problem. Since that time, there have been phone conversations and emails sent by multiple people to the finance director in an effort to learn what actions were being taken to solve this taxation issue. In the beginning, there were encouraging statements made on how the problems were being worked on and are fixed, but at this time, as time has passed, those statements appear to have been dubious at best. Since August of this year, the finance director has stopped returning any and all communications. Now I consider myself reasonable, and again, I realize that no one in here created this problem. These problems have been occurring for decades, and there is no easy fix, and I get it, as probably everybody behind me understands that too. But what actions have been taken to stop the illegal taxation from continuing? Are people still being taxed improperly? I believe there are still current employees being taxed on their weekly pension contributions. Why is this? We know it's wrong. A group of, a group of problems were identified about 11 months ago. Has anyone, is anyone doing anything to solve these problems? Why are current employees still being taxed on their pension contributions? How long are you going to allow this illegal, best improper taxation to continue? Is there going to be an effort to, is there going to be any effort to make whole the employees past and present that have been improperly taxed for years? And why stop communicating? Yes, it might take 10 or 15 minutes a month to type out an email, but now I'm here making the problem public. I'll bet a little communications would have been much easier. I thank you for your time. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else that would like to address? Yes, please.
My name is Jean Babcock, 44 Roxbury Road. I was not planning on speaking at this. I was a town employee for 30, over, a little over 30 years with the police department. I grew up in Eastlime, I went to Eastlime High School, this was my hometown. I retired back in February of 2024. I retired to take a job with the federal government. I was told at my, my husband and I both went to that, he is also a town employee, and is currently a town employee, he is with the police department, some of you might know him. His name is Bruce Babcock, he is a sergeant currently with the Eastlime Police Department. We were told that, by Kevin, that the retirees were going to get a letter to send out with their taxes to offset what we had already paid, because at the time, we were, it's paying, they're double taxed. You're getting, you're paying your taxes, then you're also paying them with the IRS, because the IRS doesn't know. But we were supposed to get something from the town. I was going to actually just wait, because tax season is coming up, I'm starting to get things together, and I'm finding out that that's probably not going to happen, that we're going to have to pay again on our income taxes. I've had the fortune of working with other federal agencies and, during trainings, and I brought this up to see if something could be done there with some of the IRS personnel. They would have to be, they can, they would absolutely help with this if the town, I don't know if the town has reached out to the IRS or not, but they would absolutely help to try to rectify the situation. You can tax your pension, from what I was told, my accountant also told, you can tax the pensions, but there's a remedy on the other side where you're not paying again. But it doesn't seem like the town and the IRS are communicating that way. So I'm just saying, if, maybe the town could reach out to try to, if they would help, to get some kind of a remedy for this. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board, and specifically this issue, or any issue? Okay. All right. You know, our format is, we usually don't respond directly to the delegations, but let me assure everybody here that we are working the problem, and it isn't being ignored, and we are working diligently on it. That's all I'll say for, for the moment, and then I'll be glad to, you know, respond to...
Dan?
Yeah?
I just have a question. I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda tonight, so that we can have a discussion regarding some of the comments that were made.
I don't think we can do that. I think the only time you can amend is at the beginning, when they call for agenda.
So I can't make a motion to have that discussion publicly tonight?
You could, but it would be out of order, and I don't think we could go forward with it.
That's probably not the right format for doing. But we'll respond to you, and I assure you of that, and it's not being ignored, I can tell you that. So, but thank you, thank you for bringing it forward and raising it to everybody's attention. Appreciate that. Thank you. Of course.
Thank you.
All right, next, is there anyone else on any other topic? All right, next is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 16th, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 16th, 2024, is submitted.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion, any changes to the minutes? All right, being none, those in favor of approving the minutes, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Next on the agenda, item E is the consent calendar, and let's see, there is one large amount from Planters Plaza, but there is a note saying that they made a mistake and paid it twice, two overpayments, so that explains it. So, just have a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar for November 6th, 2024, in the amount of $28,938.55.
All right, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. All right, we have some new business, it's a discussion of possible action of the Darryl Pond Grant, and there, in the materials, there is some correspondence to Gary, from Gary Geishel to Alicia at the, let's see, she's at Department of, she's at DEEP, correct?
Correct.
Did you want to address this, Gary, or?
Sure.
Okay.
If you had any questions or clarifications. Essentially, we've been awarded the grant for planning and design, so what I gave you is a copy of the master plan, these would be the features that are going to be, the grant money is going to pay for. As you know, it was a small award, but nonetheless, it was a $36,000 award, to get us started.
Yep.
So essentially, this is just a resolution to authorize you to sign the PSA agreement with the state.
Right.
Standard procedure.
Just giving me the authority to sign.
Correct.
Yep. And if you looked over materials, you know, there is C H R O Contract Compliance Regulations attached to it, which we have to be careful to abide by, and there is reporting back, DEEP showing, City Connecticut showing that we have abided by those regulations.
Correct. That'll all be laid out in the PSA agreement, once we receive that.
When we have it.
That'll probably be...
Okay, great.
Just a quick question, just because we had another group come in last month, is there any possibility to put a dog park up there? Is that ever discussed, or? I know that there's this group that's been talking and talking about it, and I just see there's a lot of space here, and I'm just kind of throwing it out there.
I discussed it at length with Art Carlson, who used to be former chair of the Natural Resources Commission, when we were acquiring this property. Looks like there's actually some sufficient room up by the road, Masta Way Road, right at the entrance, and it might, it's a relatively flat area, so I think it would potentially be low cost to actually construct a dog park and parking area. There's electrical power there, so you'd have lighting, and so if anybody was attending that park in the evening, some lighting, it's by the road, it's polisable.
Parking?
We'd have to maybe create some parking, but again, there's ample space, probably would, parking, that parking area would require probably some inland wetland permitting, and we have a 300-foot upland review area, so more than likely, within 300 feet of the pond. But yeah, definitely potential for that.
Okay. And that was, just tell me where it is again?
So 16 Masse Road is the entrance, so literally right at the entrance on the north side. I think there's ample space, I mean, we could look to the left, but there's a bit of a slope. So as you go up the driveway, over to the left, there's some area there that's flattened, it flattens out, you could possibly put something up there.
Okay.
It's a large, we have 100 acres of municipal area that could be used municipally, so I'm sure we can find an area.
Yeah, I just remembered thinking that they come in looking for space, so.
Seems like there's a lot of space here, so, okay.
Any other questions about it? Concerns? Nope. Pretty straightforward. Do I hear a motion to authorize me?
Move the following: Resolve that the Town of Eastlime may enter into, with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate for a grant of $36,300 for the Darryl Pond Outdoor Education, Conservation, and Recreation Center. And be it further resolved that Daniel R. Cunningham, as First Selectman, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Eastlime, and to do so and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Candace. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Gary, thanks for your help, appreciate the explanation. Okay. Now, let's see, old business appointments to boards and commissions.
We have to mark off...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So the new business under 2B, Discussion of Possible Action, Commission on Agent Bus Grant, is being marked off tonight.
Yeah, we've already taken some action that didn't require the Board of Selectmen's action on it, so, okay, so we're all set on that.
So the chair has tabled that.
We're marking it off.
It's off, it's not tabled.
Yeah, we won't need to deal with it. Okay, thank you. Next is appointments to boards and commissions, alternate member for the Fair Rent Commission. Do we have anyone in mind here? No, we don't. Okay, so it's just a placeholder, hopefully we'll find someone, fill that slot. The next is Youth and Family Services Salem Representative.
Move to appoint Sheila Miller of 440 Forsyth Road of Salem, Connecticut, as a non-voting Salem Representative Member on the Youth, Family, and Human Services Commission for the Town of Eastlime, with a term to expire on January 7th, 2030.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you for wanting to be commission member. It's hard to get people to volunteer, so we're appreciative of that, to Sheila Miller. Okay, that takes old business. Ex officio reports, do we have?
Yeah, I'll speak briefly. I just attended the ad hoc Description of Benefits Subcommittee Group. All we basically did was lay out a timeline of what we're going to do over the next two or three months, and kind of identified some priorities, and committed to getting them done. Picked out who was going to do what, when, and then we adjourned.
Great.
I left the Board of Ed meeting early, earlier this week, because I wanted to make it across town to be a part of the fire ceremony, fire services ceremony, but they called that off, obviously, because there's so much fire stuff going on in town. Before I left, though, I spoke with the Chair of Board of Ed and said, is there anything you'd like me to bring to Board of Selectmen? And they said, he said yes, just, they can't open a budget until an old one is closed, and currently there's a, an audit on an old one, so he said, just do what you can to hasten the completion of this audit. I don't really know if we can do anything, so, but I brought it to you guys, so there you go.
Great.
That's it for me.
Yeah, I think we're all right with that. Thank you very much, Jason. Appreciate that. Yeah? Anything?
Okay, so there was an inland wetland meeting on the 5th that I missed, because they changed it from Tuesday, because of Election Day, to Monday, and kind of missed it. However, I did attend a water and sewer meeting on October 22nd, 2024, and the issue that was presented was on Parker's Place. The issue was, they wanted to reallocate sewer capacity from Bride Lake, which was one of their projects, to a project at Parker Place. And Attorney Zamarka, the town attorney, spoke about it and gave his opinion, saying that it was not possible to allocate capacity from one project to another. It's not supported by the Enabling Statute, and it was not supported by Eastlime regulations. So, so that was denied, and it was a very interesting and lively discussion, so that's... The other thing, I guess we're probably going to talk about, electric boat.
Why don't you talk about it?
Okay, so, I forgot what day it was, but I guess it was last week, Dan and myself, we attended first orientation one day, and then the next was basically a drill. So they basically said there was some, you know, problem with radioactive material, nuclear material, of a leak. And so we got to listen to Electric Boat, to what happened, and how they go through the drill, and then, you know, how they contact us, you know, what we do. So it was, it was very interesting. And then they had also like a press release, you know, like a drill press release, and we kind of gave our feedback to them on that. So it was an all-day thing, but it was, it was very interesting. And we also got a tour of the emergency operations center there, that is, I think it's...
Twenty million this year.
Twenty? Yeah, something like, $20 million that they built, and it, yeah, it was pretty amazing. And I think this is the first time that they've actually brought in, they offered it to all the different towns who are in the emergency kind of zone, and basically, I think we were one of the few towns that actually took advantage of it. So if something does happen, then, you know, I'd rather be proactive and know what to do. They gave us a lot of reading, I learned a lot about nuclear submarines that I had no idea about, and it was, it was very interesting. So I was really glad I spent the time and did that, so.
Yeah, I would echo that, and I'll add my own take on it when you're good. Yeah, okay. Candace?
Historics meeting last night, but I was at the election. And we were going to have Park and Rec, they had to cancel their meeting after the schedule, so.
You had a busy night.
I had a very busy night.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have anything else?
Yes, Welsko.
Yep.
They announced, they have a vote on, they had a bunch of fishermen come and talk about having a regular scallop season open every year, so we don't have to put in a legal announcement every time of the day, so it saves money for them. And it's going to be more of a traditional thing, whether there's scallops there or not, that the season's going to be open for a month and a half. I forgot the exact dates, but it was published in the paper yesterday.
Yes.
And so it's going to be for everything now, so they don't have to announce that the season will be from this date to this date for scalping.
Right. So they'll figure out a range of dates and know that.
No, they already got the exact, the dates are penciled in, already guaranteed, yeah. And it's going to be forever.
So if there's, does there have to be enough scallops there to do?
They're going to have the season, and if they have to say, no, stop, we'll stop in the middle of it, but right now, it's tentative to be every year.
That way, then you don't have to go through the rigmarole of, yeah, no, that is good.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did see that in the paper, actually.
And they had one other issue with the, with the shell fishing opening up, they had, had a bad helm in the boat, and they couldn't get anybody to repair it, to replace the helm in the boat. I got a guy, so I'll take care of it.
I got a guy.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Don.
Yep.
That's great. So let's see, my, I don't really have an ex officio report, but I'll give my First Selectmen's report. I attended the, Connecticut Department of Transportation Construction Meeting, I attend that, sometimes it's bi-weekly, sometimes it's every other week, yeah, bi-weekly usually. And they give us an update of where the project is at the end of Route 161, underneath the underpass for I-95. The estimate now for the total on that project is $152 million, and they have spent to date $79 million, so they're about 52% there, halfway there, spending-wise. There are some milestones that they intend to meet by 11:30, November 30th, end of the month. They expect to have the paving completed from Industrial Road, which is next to Stop and Shop, all the way down to underneath the bridge at 161, underneath the new underpass. Right now, it needs one more layer of asphalt to bring it up to grade, so you won't have any raised structures on the road. So right now, the, you know, where they collect the water for the storm runoff, they're about an inch and a half above grade, as you can see. But once they're done with that next layer of tar or asphalt, and the plants are still open, because it's been so warm, that'll be perfectly smooth, so if you hit one, it's not going to mess up your tires, and it'll be better for the traffic. And that part of the, that phase of the job will, will be done, at least on 161. Off to the sides, of course, they're going to be working diligently, working on the new, you know, off ramps and on ramps, that's going to be in process, that's ongoing, but that's sort of off the road, so it's, doesn't really interfere with the traffic. The other milestone that they intend to meet is on December 15th, traffic on I-95 will be going over the new section of the bridge that they just completed. They did the pour, I believe, Monday. The weather's been helping, it's not helping us out with the forest fires, but it's been helping them out with the project, they were able to pour the concrete. It hasn't been done in one slab all at once, so it cures together. That's done, and they will be on target, I believe, for 12:15 to bring the traffic over that bridge, and then they can start the process of dismantling the next... And then they can start the process of dismantling the next third of the old bridge. So they're moving right along and they intend to finish it up November 30th, 2026, and they're still on target for that date. So that's where we stand on that. Uh, the other thing, of course, as everybody knows, um, the fires, forest fires, brush fires have been plaguing us for the last couple of weeks. I spent quite a bit of time over at Rocky Neck watching the operation. Very impressive, they brought in, uh, the California Hotshots. Uh, they were in the state up north fighting the Hawthorne Fire up in Berlin, but they were diverted down here. And I was there and they showed up with about five trucks, about four or five guys in each truck and, you know, they just went at that fire, chainsaws and pickaxes and rakes and leaf blowers. And they create a, a channel, a path where there is nothing that's combustible and, and they do that digging it and raking it. And then they start backfiring, so they go in about twelve feet and they start a fire and then, uh, they wait till that gets going a little bit and it's sucking the air. And then they start another fire right on the line that they've just cleared. And that fire travels over to the fire that's ten feet away. And then when they commingle, the whole thing will just, it'll go right over to the main fire that they're trying to kill. And it, uh, what it does is it burns all the fuel, so it gets, uh, it eventually puts itself out because there's nothing more to burn. Right now, we're still smelling a lot of smoke. Uh, they call that a crown fire. Once everything has burned up, there's still these residuals around the perimeter of what was the original fire, called the crown fire. And that kind of smoke is more obnoxious than the actual smoke from the forest fire because it doesn't rise up high and get dispersed. It's low level and a lot of people are smelling smoke and largely that's what people are smelling and experiencing. So they've done an unbelievable job, it's very impressive to watch. Last night, Asagachi, we had another fire out there, very fast-moving, serious, dangerous fire. And they, I mean, within minutes, we had more, we had forty-eight people out fighting that fire last night. Amazing how they showed up and got out there and got that thing under control. And, you know, they're worried because our house is on Asagachi Road. So, uh, wonderful job by them and they're on top of it. And that's, um, that's my report.
Can I just bring up one other thing also? So just regarding the fires, um, I was reading on Facebook and somebody was mentioning or posting that, uh, they were using a metal rake on like a stone patio. And that actually, because everything is so dry, you know, started, uh, the sparks started, almost started a fire. So people just need to be really careful, not use the grills, not use anything. And I guess there was something on Ancient Highway where a gentleman was mowing his lawn and that caused a fire, caught the lawnmower on fire, the whole thing. So you just be really, really careful with anything outside at this point.
Yeah, and even, uh, you know, if you have a four-wheel drive, you wanna go out in the forest driving around, you know, the, the leaves can get underneath and, uh, can hit the catalytic converter and other things and, um, set the leaves on fire. So it's really time to be cautious and really think about, you know, the activities you're engaging in, is it creating sparks, is it anything that could start combustion? So we need to be really careful until we get a good dousing of rain and we're just hoping for that.
Is there a way we could do like public service announcements about this information? Just to get them out to the public? I don't know who watches these YouTube feeds, but maybe something else might be a little bit more helpful.
Yeah, and we do have, you know, there was posting...
It's on the Facebook, yeah.
On the webpage. And, uh, yeah, it's a good idea, maybe if we can add a little more to that and, you know, warnings to people, that's a great idea. We'll try to do something tomorrow, so we can add something to the, to the webpage. All right. Yeah. Are you on over here?
Why not?
I think at this point, I think we should let it go for now.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, no communications? Any public comment? Do you have anyone else who wanna address the public? Yeah, why we could do it as a selectman's response, that might be... Kevin, I, I was just gonna make a very brief commentary, selectmen's response about the issues that were raised, raised during the delegations. Did you wanna comment on that at all or you just wanted to keep it very brief and...
Now, hold on, I'll go up to the mic. Hold on, I'll go to the mic. Sure, so, um...
Just for the record, I'm delegating my selectmen's response to you because you're better versed in, in addressing that.
All right, perfect, so there's really...
I'm sorry, before you begin, would that create the opportunity for us to ask questions? Like Candace wanted to have a discussion about this? Could she do it then?
That's what I had planned.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect.
Is that okay with you? I think, I think that's...
You guys tell me what to do.
All right, yeah, well, we'll, I think this is the appropriate place to do that and let's hear what...
So, um, there's really two issues we're talking about, right? So the first issue is health insurance, um, and it's the premium portion that the employers pay, I'm, I'm sorry, employees, right? So the police department, I believe they pay nineteen and a half to twenty percent of their portion of the premium. So before, um, the new payroll clerk, Christina Apple, started, um, she came in and when they were discussing that new paycheck, um, we went to actually having electronic paychecks. Before they were printed, stuffed in envelopes every week and delivered to the various departments. Uh, when Christina started, um, you know, giving her, her, her credit here, she went, wanted to go electronic with this, right? Get people's emails and in an effort, when she did that, it showed pre-tax and post-tax deductions and it broke them out. And she raised the alarm bell and said, hey, this doesn't look right, this should be pre-tax, not post-tax. And so we started investigating that. We've consulted a, a tax attorney on that, we have a meeting tomorrow with him. So this is ongoing issues. The second issue is the pension. So when they talk about, um, the, so police officers get two percent per year is their service award, so to speak, they pay in eight percent of that. That pay-in is currently a post-tax pay-in. So what happens is they pay in taxes now and when they collect their pension, you know, twenty years, twenty-five years from now, the actuary calculates a taxable and a non-taxable amount based on interest accrued on that amount, you know, there's a whole calculation that I don't deal with because actuaries are strange individuals. But anyway, not to insult any actuaries, accountants don't understand what they do. So they calculate this taxable and non-taxable amount and that gets applied over their expected, like life expectancy, so to speak. So right now, you know, we just emailed our actuary this morning and we're discussing this exact thing. So he's working on it as we speak. October 9th, uh, the Pension Board held a special meeting to authorize an expenditure of upwards of, I believe it was twenty-five hundred, for our actuary to calculate these new amounts. So we've been working with the actuaries, we've worked with our tax attorney, we've been working with the first selectmen's been involved in this. The interim police chief and I were emailing last Wednesday about this. So, um, I, I, I know I get a lot of emails, um, um, from some of the retired police officers, some of them are on a daily basis. And, uh, so we are working towards this, this is an ongoing issue we've been addressing. We addressed it going forward, so it's not, the cycle's not perpetuating, it's stopped. And the remedy, talking with our tax attorney, is we're going to have to restate going back three years, which we're statutorily required to do, but it stops after the three-year look-back period. So with that, does anyone have any questions on the two matters?
Was it tax attorney who said it was a three years?
IRS guidance.
The IRS, okay.
Yep.
So you, we've gotten guidance from the IRS and our, and our actuaries and our tax attorney.
Correct.
So we, uh...
One more, one more piece of it.
Yeah.
The Pension Board's been working to restate our pension, I believe since 2010. They've kinda had these attempts at re, uh, restating it. We've actually gone forward with it, so we have a pension attorney that has restated our pension documents. In that, um, discussion with him, he's recommended, as well as the actuaries, in-house counsel, to switch from a post-tax pension plan to a pre-tax pension plan. So going forward, their pension is totally taxable and so they pay taxes at the back end, not the front end. And that's best practice. So there's a lot of changes here, this is, we're just trying to clean up, clean up things and...
If I may add to that, um, so it's, it's a very complex issue because there's, there's two issues, there's the, the health insurance and then there's the tax. And then it's trying to compute in present time what the liability is or what, you know, the exposure was to them. So, um, it's not an easy thing to figure out, but we have been working, we were having, what, weekly meetings now with the, or every other week with the...
Correct.
Tax attorney. And as, you know, it's, you gotta kinda advance one bit of information and then once you have that, you can work with the actuary. And, uh, and eventually, I think we'll have the entire picture so that we can, uh, we can implement a solution to everybody's...
Correct, yeah. So like I said, we were working on it, um, there is discuss, there was a few inaccuracies in there. We don't know if it went back thirty years because statutorily, after seven years, we don't have those records anymore. So, um, we are working with them, we were, last Wednesday, 10:30, we communicated with the police chief, interim police chief about this matter, so, um, we are doing our, you know, we're doing our due diligence and getting this rectified.
Great.
Were there any other questions, Candace? Did you have any other questions you wanted to ask about it?
Yes, actually I do. So I do wanna say publicly that I've had absolutely no knowledge about any of this. And sitting here as a Board of Selectmen member, um, I feel blindsided. And I'm not too sure how anyone else feels and I am going to be asking who has had knowledge about it, um, because it appears that there's a lack of transparency. If you have a board that has members on it, each and every person should have knowledge of what is going on. And again, I'm not speaking for anyone else, I'm speaking for myself. That is a huge lack of transparency. And I don't like it and I don't think that it's right at all. Then asking to have conversation while, while these people are here, which I believe they have, that's respectful, right? Then I'm told no. So I think that there is more issues than just the complexity of the health insurance and the post and pre-tax. How long has it been going on? Decades? You've known about it, somebody's known about it since 2003. Nobody else, I don't know about it. But there seems to be a lot, uh, going on and there is a huge lack of transparency.
Okay, so...
So what I'd like to do is actually put it on an agenda. I would like to have it on the agenda so that we can have conversation and that the very people that took the time to come in here to reach out, because that's what they did, at least that's my understanding from what I watched, right? They, they came in here because they want everyone on this board to know, right? Because somebody knows and I can only assume that it's you, Dan.
I do, I know about it.
I know nothing about it. It's the first I've ever heard about it.
I don't know. You see, that's what it's, it's left up to the thought of, hmm, who does know? I don't know. Then you said that you had communication with the, um, acting chief, but the union is different than the acting chief. That's all I'm, you know, gonna say there. And it should be rectified and I would like to have it on an agenda so that we can have a public conversation about it going forward because that's true transparency and that's what I have it, so thank you.
So the way public delegation works is people speak, or the way it's been working since I've been on the Board of Selectmen is people speak and then at the end, we address it. So it's not, that's where the response comes. It doesn't come right after because you don't want the give and take because it can get pretty volatile and that's, that's the thing. It's my understanding that no one knew about this, I think this is a finance issue, so they were dealing with Kevin Gervais on this. And obviously the first selectman knows because he's the head of the town.
And the pension board.
And the pension board, because that's, that's what they're doing.
Yeah.
So now it's before us, so I think it's a good idea to, you know, put it on the agenda and, you know, have, have a, you know, a more lengthy discussion.
More robust.
You know, or have people from the Pension Board come, maybe they can explain actuarial and stuff. But the other issue is, it's my understanding, and maybe you can correct me, Kevin, that when you became aware of this was when the electronic, when the building went from paper to electronic?
Correct.
Am I, and when did that occur, please?
Christina just had her one-year anniversary, I believe, so within the last year.
So it was accurate, the 2023?
What's that?
So it wasn't 2002?
No, no, it was, so it, things have been going along for all these years and, you know, it might never have been detected, except that Christina was a very, and she recognized that there was some...
Yeah, this has been in the last year's Pension Board minutes.
Yeah, so...
So it has been going on for decades, but it was, it was...
We cannot confirm it's been going for decades?
We don't know when it started. You know, records only go back so far.
Well, until they discovered it was 2023, you can't do about something that you don't know about.
Oh, absolutely not.
Right, so, um, and if I may, I'd just say, you know, to address your concerns about transparency and, uh, you know, that's important to me. But this really, in my mind, just started out as a, as a payroll issue. And, you know, we didn't bring every little payroll issue up to the, to the board and it didn't seem that it was, it was something out of the ordinary, that's how I viewed it, but it was something that, you know, we would try to correct and, and make right. So it didn't seem like it was at a level that, you know, would be of great interest to the board, but so, and it wasn't any, any...
Communication, that, I think that's where, probably where it comes from, right? I mean, anytime somebody's trying to get their point across and if they're being actively ignored and/or there's a hint of non-communication, right? Then that's going to do what? It's going to encourage people, if I'm not gonna get my answer here, and I would probably do the very same thing, I would, if I'm not gonna get my answer from this person who's supposed to be communicating with me, is supposed to be having dialogue with me, well then, okay, I'll check that box and then I'm gonna go higher and then I'm gonna go higher and then I'm gonna go to the highest. So that's what brought this...
Yeah, no, and that's, but it wasn't something that, you know, anyone was trying to sweep under the rug, we've been working the problem and, uh, Kevin's been very diligent and we were trying to get the, assemble the right people to fit, once we had a problem, to figure out who can help us understand it. And I will say, it's been an education for me because I'm not an accountant, but, you know, and, uh, so I think we're doing the best we can to, you know, we've identified the problem and now we're trying to figure out the best way to, um, rectify it, dissatisfy the employees. But there is certainly nothing we're trying to hide or, you know, just, yeah, I didn't, I never thought it would be of great interest to the board, but, you know, but maybe there was a mistake on my part. And, uh, but I think I'll be very happy to put it on the agenda and we can have a thorough discussion and, um, try to give everybody a little accounting lesson and we can do that at some point.
Next Board of Selectmen meeting.
Okay. Kevin, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Real quick, Kevin, um, I agree with what she said about communication and I think putting it on the agenda will help keep us in touch and them in touch as well by having it on the agenda. The, um, uh, order magnitude, though. If it, we only do a look back of three years and in fact it had, we find something for twenty-seven extra years. Are we liable?
Our records don't go that far back.
Okay.
They get purged.
Would, so would that bring up another potential act?
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
You know, I want Kevin to give a legal opinion, we do have counsel that's advising us, so, yeah, I would, I would...
Also, for those that are, uh, deceased and were receiving a pension, would there be any kind of, again, just some things to think about their families would be entitled to or whatever? And how much liability is it, it on the town, if there is any? You don't have to answer the question, just, yeah.
Yeah, it's beyond, I think the scope of what, you know...
Need a special attorney for that.
Yeah, there's a, a lot of potential issues, but we're trying to, we're trying to address what we can and do the right thing, so. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's, I think, I think that's the selectmen's response, I think we can check that by... Check that box. Now we're going to go into executive session, so we'll turn off, when we do that, we turn off the microphones and.
So change to go to the front camera, go to four?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, and now new mics motion?
Yeah, we'll move, we'll just move to go to executive session. So we need a motion?
Right here.
Okay.
Okay, so we came out of executive session at eight fourteen. No, I guess motions were taken, no, no decisions were made. And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight fourteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.